All right, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for District 186. And Mrs. Hines, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Door? Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Rungy?
Here. And for those watching, we have Annette that is zooming in and Kara probably will be. So just want to make sure that everybody that's watching knows this. All right, item three is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Evers, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
And I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Come in.
Is it second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of District 186's regular board meeting minutes dated October the 15th, 2020, tri-county minutes, regular board meeting minutes dated October 14th, 2020, tri-county bills for November 2020, applications and reports, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Come in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 bills. I think there's three packets. If you have a question, please let the fellow board members know which package we're asking from and which page.
We can do it line by line.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Annette, one?
So, page one of packets with 11 pages, I see that Chromebooks are, are they all in and delivered out to students then, or?
Yes, they were delivered two Mondays ago. So all the elementary schools correct, was it correct? Corrected, two Mondays ago.
And then, another one, page just a minute. Um, take eight, and it's a, it's a real minor charge, but I noticed it, so, um, there was rainbow pure water. I was wondering if where that is, if one of the water bottle fillers is not installed yet, or where that is.
Annette, that is back in the portable building, um, in the back of McIlvee, because we have no potable water in the back.
Oh, okay, all right.
Anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the District 186 bills as presented.
Come in.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is communications, and I believe, Mrs. Hines, you said you had a couple, three?
We have three of them. The first one is from Steve Carrington. "To the Board of Education of Murfreesboro CUSD 186, please accept this letter as my formal notice of my intent to retire from my TRS position effective June 30th, 2024. It has truly been an honor to serve the students, parents, faculty, staff, and administrators of the Murfreesboro community." Steve Carrington.
Can you say no?
I haven't heard a recommendation yet to accept it.
It's clear that he said the words "TRS position," so, um, we will let him retire from his TRS capacity and maybe come back as an IMRF employee. So, sure, we can say yes to the retirement from TRS and yes to also becoming a second retirement.
To accept that recommendation, that we're going to let Mr. Carrington retire.
So.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At least we got you a few more years.
A little while.
The, the second one is from Troy Brown. "Dr. Evers, Mr. Rungy, and the CUSD 186 Board of Education, it is with regret that I can no longer fulfill the residency requirements of being a board member for CUSD 186. My family has moved from Somerset Township to Murfreesboro Township, and I will have to relinquish my seat effective November the 18th, 2020. It has been an honor serving the district. Sincerely, Troy Brown."
And I'll regretfully entertain a motion to accept that. I guess we don't have much of a choice since you're moving on.
You can move back. It's not that big of a deal.
Entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll move.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last one is from Audrey Stewart. "Dear Dr. Evers and school board members, I am requesting to extend my maternity leave to go through the end of December and resume my teaching duties at the beginning of the third quarter on January the 4th, 2021. I have gotten permission from my building principal, and she has assured me my teaching responsibilities will be taken care of in my absence. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Audrey Stewart."
We absolutely support that decision and make that recommendation.
Now entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
Come in.
Take one of them for the second. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
That's it.
All right, I don't see a fishbowl, so I don't think we have. I'm sorry.
This is from Jeff Keener. "Congratulations to Murfreesboro Middle School teacher Chelsea Bunton. Chelsea has been selected as the 2020 McDonald's Teach It Forward Outstanding Educator. Over 880 nominations were received from local community members, parents, and fellow educators, and Chelsea rose to the top as one of the most outstanding educators in our area. For her good deeds and remarkable work with the youth in our community, she will receive the following: a $100 Visa gift card, Outstanding Educator t-shirt, 25 customizable certificates, and McDonald's coupons to Teach It Forward, also known as Pay It Forward, for outstanding student achievements. Chelsea is using her prize money to buy new books for her students. This is a well-deserved accomplishment for a teacher that puts her heart and soul into her profession."
Very good.
Very good.
That's great.
I got one from Matthew Todd. "April Bartnik, 5th grade teacher, Carruthers showcased Zoom and on Steam student artwork at the 2020 Sigma Xi Art and Films Festival. It is a scientific research honor society founded at Cornell University. The class art project was a part of graduate coursework with the River Region Master Teaching Fellows Program at SIUC that is supported by the Robert Noyes Program and National Science Foundation. The Noyes Fellowship Program focuses on STEM education with a focus on environmental sustainability in which Ms. Bartnik has been part of since the spring of 2019."
Excellent. That was it? All right, next item is a Freedom of Information Act request, and it appears that we had one.
Yes, we did. Vince Eske with Local Labs sent us a request just, I think it was board meeting day last time, and the information has been provided in a timely manner. And we also received a Freedom of Information Act request today, but, and I can't remember the name of the gentleman of the Senate, but he asked for all the email addresses of all of our employees, school email addresses, or could I just pass on this information about his company, and then he would drop the FOIA? And so, like, okay, yeah, I'll just do that. Here's an email, read it if you want, so, so that's, yeah, that just came through today.
He did drop it, then?
Well, he just said either or, you know, either, so I, instead of the providing our information, I will just forward that, that information to our employees through the list, through the listserv, and that's it, so. Haven't quite seen one like that before.
Okay, item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Mr. Carrington or Mrs. Hines, did we receive anything from anyone since there's nobody else here?
I did not.
No, and, and Ms. Asa and Mr. Young are, are watching the stream, and they didn't have any public comment either.
Okay. I'm sorry, Steve, you did?
I do want to have an employee comment.
No, yes.
I'm going to jump in.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank the Board for allowing us to hire student workers. These summertime student kids really came in and, and helped us big time when the Chromebooks came in for the elementary schools. At 2:30, I think, on the, whatever Friday it was in October, the Chromebook showed up, showed up. At 8:30 in the morning the next day, we had some young ladies there at the high school working, and they worked till about 4:00 on Saturday. They came in Sunday afternoon around 1:00 and worked till about 4:00. They came in Monday morning about 8:30 again and worked till 1:30 or 2:00. And then Mr. White helped on that Monday as well, so we could get things through the library system, and that allowed us, in one weekend and less than a half of one day, get those devices ready and to the elementary schools so that they can get in the hands of the kids on Tuesday when they showed up. And we could not have done that with just our own staff. The young ladies that we've got, just to mention them, Michaela Trexler, Chapin Hammers, I knew this would happen, Bridget Clover, and then my daughter Molly. Those girls came in, and I thank them, plus a little bit of my time, because I didn't work that whole time, and then Mr. Weaver White. We had about 75 hours that we pushed in, you know, quickly to try to get that done. And again, that couldn't happen without those young ladies, so thank you for allowing us to get those student workers, that helps a lot. And then, a couple of you have, you know, mentioned to me just a little bit about tech support, because we've added now almost 2,000 devices to the network to manage. I did some quick numbers on our help desk ticketing system that we track, and roughly 35% of all of the tickets we've received since August deal with Chromebooks. And so, when you start to take people who already have a full-time job managing everything and add that kind of workload, there's some additional stress and time involved. And so, I just put that out there. I think there's already been a little bit of discussion about possibly needing some extra time or extra staff to deal with that. Just running the numbers today, that's where we were at, and I just wanted to share that as well.
And that was really, I mean, you've only had the additional 1,200 devices out for weeks now.
Right, so, we're expecting that that will continue to roll.
Sure. And especially during all remote, I mean, right now, you know, in this pause, that everyone will be on their devices way more.
But the young ladies, the student workers that we've had, we're going to continue to need that kind of support in the summer and possibly through the school year like this in special occasions. I really thank the Board for allowing us to do that.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, too. That's, that's good to know that, you know, through this, through this entire journey, I think the teamwork and the people stepping, stepping up, and I, I was, had a discussion with a teacher from Marissa over the weekend, and told them how proud I was of our entire staff and kids for the way they've handled all of this. It's just been phenomenal, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right, uh, we'll move into old business. First item is the financial and COVID-19 update. Dr. Evers?
I will do COVID first and then do financial after. Not a ton of new financial in general we're talking today, so with the COVID, I sent out, I hope you all received it, I'm going to, I'll hand it around to you. As you know, last Thursday, the recommendation from Jackson County Health Department was to go to an all-remote, at least through the, through Thanksgiving, to the, so December 1st with our kids returning. So, we, we had to look at how we're utilizing our faculty and staff, and, so, all of the building principals did a great job of looking at their paraprofessional staff and...
Can I stop you just for one second? Annette, this is, this was emailed to the Board a couple of hours ago, this is the one that...
Yeah, I read it. I already read it.
Okay, that's what, that's what was handed out, I just wanted to ensure that you knew what that meant.
So, so kind of delineating...
Your care is clear now.
Oh, your care.
Okay.
Delineating functions for each of the paraprofessionals, because they're traditional workday, kind of will be a little different now that we're in an all-remote setting, so the, the principals all did a job of breaking down how their paraprofessionals will be utilized. Mr. Elmeyer focused on dividing by departments, Mr. Keener put them more with grade-level teachers, and then they, they both have function for teachers' aides working, and each school will have an Internet cafe or a student assistance center, so students who have Internet connectivity issues, students can sign up to get in-person support. There'll be paraprofessionals between three and four assigned at each build, or in each foyer or cafeteria, they have assigned spaces, so the high school has the foyer, the middle school has the cafeteria, the elementaries have their cafeteria space, and they also have additional space, additional students, if it becomes well, well utilized. So, at this point, we're asking parents to transport their kids up, the buildings have divided it between 8:30 and 11:00, or noon to 2:30 are their times where, where students, you know, parents can sign their children up to get those access. We don't want it to be a daycare drop-off, but we know that students are going to need support, and not every child will have access to the Internet, so some of the paraprofessionals are used in those, those areas, and others are being used in the classroom capacities, doing progress monitoring and benchmarking and...
As these monitors are dealing with these kids, and they say they don't have Internet access, are we offering the hotspots still, and, you know, because maybe they just missed the fact that this is truly a free hotspot that they can take home and have Internet, and do we still have the opportunity to hand those out at this point?
Well, there, there's, there were 100 originally built into the CARES grant. All of those, except for one, are assigned, one of them is damaged and is getting replaced. And not knowing how long the pause will be, at this point, we have less than 20% of our students who are all remote when it's not on this pause, so to, to give them, you know, right now, it's a seven-day pause to instruction, so we're looking at, we know that the most valuable, you know...
Right.
Use of, you know, we want to make sure that they went to the, the students and families in need during the, who are accessing through virtual, but, because of a primary source, so we don't know if this pause will extend, and we kind of want to keep that momentum and, you know, moving forward to keep the kids in school. And not, and if it extends beyond the seven days, then we may have to look at people who come from rural areas where their parents can't bring them into an Internet access location.
Well, I would encourage you to start keeping track as they come up, if there's an opportunity to maybe buy another bundle of those, because if I recall, the units themselves are free, it's just a monthly cost to activate.
That's correct.
Right.
You are signing up for a 12-year, a 12-month contract with them, and then there's a termination fee if you, if you drop early. Termination fee is about three months' worth of service.
Okay.
So, I have a question. So, is Internet access available in the parking lots, too? I mean, they can log when they are, right?
Sure, absolutely. And they, they can access from the parking lots, they can access from those cafeterias or foyers, and then there's, each of the, the students who access it will be assigned a seat, so we'll have seating charts for anyone who's there, and they'll be cleaned every day from that 11 to 12 o'clock hour, for anyone who does access it in person.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board on that? Financial?
Really not a lot has changed since the last board meeting. The only thing that I have seen that will impact us is, of course, after the last election, the graduated income tax not passing, and the governor saying that there will be cuts and it will be painful. I don't know what that's going to mean to us exactly. For this year, the people I'm talking to that have contacts in legislature feel that we will get our funds this year. I don't know about our categoricals, transportation and, and maybe some of the special ed money. That may not come this year, that may be slow coming with the backlog of bills, but feel, they feel that the evidence-based funding, you know, the flat level that we're receiving this year, that we should get, not knowing what next year's going to look like. I've heard cuts of, that the governor's asking each department for a 10, 10 to 15% cut. I don't know how we can take a 10 to 15% cut. For us, it's, you know, we're $11 million for evidence-based funding, so those are, those are real dollars. That's a month of payroll, basically you're looking at. So, a lot of unknowns still at this point, nothing certain. We are still rolling along our property taxes. We received, I think it was 65% through our last payment through October, was it October 23rd, maybe, which is great considering November 17th is today, is today 17? Today, taxes to do today with, with no penalties if they're paid by today, so I feel like we're in a good place there, but still a lot of uncertainties.
Oh, and one other thing for COVID, our rapid antigen testing kits will be shipped today, so either today or tomorrow. We, we went through the final hoop of that process, and so we are registered as a laboratory, and they will be sending those out. Our nurses will be doing the virtual training, so that as soon as we're back in person, anyone who has a symptom, whether it's a student or a faculty member, can come and get, you know, get swabbed, and within 15 minutes will know whether or not. And it has a 98% accuracy, so two out of 100.
How does that play with the full-remote situation?
If a, if a family, I mean, if they're a registered student in our district, if it's a full-remote, we can have, the, the universal precautions will have to be shielded in, in 95, the gloves and the, the gowns. If someone wanted to, if they were keeping a child at home because they woke up with a bad headache, they don't have to send them with that symptom, so the kid can come down and say, "Hey, I have a headache, can you test me?" So, if a parent wants to, if they're enrolled in our district or employed by our district or a board member who's going to participate in the meeting and wants to know if it's a sinus allergy issue or a COVID ex-symptom, we can, we can swab them within 15 minutes, know whether or not you have COVID or not. And they're saying we do not have to follow up with the, the PCR, a positive is a positive. A negative occasionally might mean that you tested too soon, so if you had a headache two or three days in a row, it might, you might have tested the day too, too soon, and we can swab. And all of that data and information will be reported into a state registry that reports those numbers to our health department, so those become a number within ours, and so our numbers will, you know, get increased, or, you know, there'll be a tested number.
It goes to the state before it comes back locally?
It is a database that is accessed by our health department.
So, Jackson County has access?
Sure, yep.
So, I have another question.
Sure.
With us knowing that people are going to get together over the break and they are going to be traveling, what kind of plans are we looking at for potentially, I mean, is there any possibility of extending, staying remote with knowing that?
Well, and that, that we're going to have to look at what the metrics show. Clearly with group indoor gatherings, the metrics will probably spike again and, or continue to escalate like they've shown in the last few weeks, so, right now, it's a seven-day pause with the likelihood of it extending through potentially both of our next two major holidays, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas, and that's why we looked at coming up with a system for our paraprofessional utilization, because there's a good likelihood that we'll see it through early January, maybe this pause. I'm hopeful sooner, but, but you're looking at, at least probably extending it maybe a week beyond Thanksgiving, just so that people will at least start to, to show or shed those, like, symptoms, so that we, we can get accurate swabbing of, you know, or antigen testing if kids come back, but, but definitely is all, all on a discussion that we'll be having. We have our weekly superintendent meeting, and two representatives from Jackson County Health Department participate, so I'll, we'll touch base as a region next Monday and kind of look at the week beyond, what, what that will look like, the week beyond Thanksgiving.
Are we allowing students to come home if they can, then?
Uh, no.
No?
Unless they're, unless they have COVID or are testing for COVID, or are symptomatic with a doctor's note for COVID, so they're reporting and streaming and doing the recorded instruction from their class space, from their workspace.
So, how do, will they be tested, then, if they, even if the students don't come back, how are we going to keep that spread from occurring in our buildings?
They're in their class by themselves.
They're by themselves. Yeah, they're bubbled, they're by themselves or with their paraprofessional that's assigned to them, so they're working from their, their classroom, which is a large empty space right
I would think that we'd like to essential employee at my work or Walmart, I mean, everybody whose social distance keep a mask on.
Yep, for sure.
All right, thank you. Next item under old business is a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed 5.5 million general obligation school bonds. And who's taking this?
I can do that.
Okay.
So, as you can see in your board agenda, the district plans to use the proceeds of the bond sale and in your approval to fund the middle school HVAC project, expecting completion date of December 2021. Majority of that will be done probably by the end of August before school starts, but there will be probably some more continuing throughout, because it's a, it's a major job in, you know, encompassing the, the biggest part of the building. Also, asbestos abatement, replacing a portion of the roof, replacing the ceilings, light fixtures, whiteboards, restroom partitions, and then the alternate was the, the exterior concrete series at the west end of the building, also renovation of the Dean of Students Office, that, that area. That's what we're looking at. I, I will tell you that we will be, I will be asking for the issuance of a lot lower number pending approval of the bids. I'm looking at needing to net 3.2 million, not 5.5. So, I thought you would be, I was super excited about that, I thought you might be, too.
So are we.
It makes, it makes our, the debt schedule look a lot better, a lot shorter, with a little bit more room at the end from our sales tax, property, sales tax money, so that's kind of where we are on that right now.
Questions from the Board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
I have one. Hey, renovation of the dean's office, is it going to be moved? Are they just updating it? What exactly does that entail?
There's asbestos, it's, it's a...
Complete gut.
It's a, yeah.
It's a complete gut and remodel for this existing space.
It's not a very, not a very usable space, you can hear everything that goes on in the actual dean of students' office, there, you know, there's a, they're looking at maybe more of a conference, a little larger conference space, and just a, it, it's not a very usable space.
I wondered if it was being moved, or how the renovation was going to be.
No, not moving into something that they've talked about for years and years, and we thought this would be a good opportunity, plus the, there needs to be some abatement there anyway, good opportunity to, to make that happen.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the issuance of the bonds.
Come in.
In a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Last item under old business is the approval of the Murfreesboro Middle School HVAC Phase 3 bid, which was sent to us and handed out, right? It's in front of you.
The lowest responsible bidder was ANW Plumbing and Heating. Their base bid was $2,460,000, and the alternate bid, one, was $23,000, that was a replacement of steps, $23,400, for a total award of $2,483,000, $483,400. Sorry, no glasses and a big number. We had three, three bids.
Questions from the Board?
So, did they meet the policy we put in place last month, then?
Yes.
Yes, all, all three of the contractors that've been on the projects are CDB pre-qualified.
Okay.
That list was provided to us before we opened the bids.
Bye.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the bids as presented.
Come in.
In a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Moving into new business, the first item under new business is a resolution to establish the preliminary tax levy. Mrs. Bush?
Yes, and you have that resolution in your packet as enclosure, too. I, as I typically do, have talked to the assessor's office to receive reports comparing last year to this year, looking for new property, to see if, if we need to look at assessing more than, or levying more than 5% of the extension from 2000, 2019. And based on those reports, I feel that the levy that you have in your place represents 4.95% of the taxes that were extended in 2019, and this should be sufficient to cover new property and... And this should be sufficient to cover new property and, um, any assessments that we may see. And that total, $8,92,422 is reflected in the estimated resolution. Of course, we will be bringing to you next month the actual certificate of levy and all the PTAL resolutions required to be approved by the board. So this is just setting the estimated amounts and, you know, discussion about, uh, a tax levy hearing, which by law, that's only required if it exceeds 5%. If we're levying more than 5% of what we extended in 2019.
This is exactly what we did last year, correct?
It is exactly what we did in 2019.
We were under the 5%.
We were under the 5%. We've been under the 5% the majority of the time, uh, in the past 19 years that I've been here.
The only years Walmart's first year after you were there.
Walmart, yeah. And 2008 Walmart was the, and we, and we knew that was coming on the rolls and, um, definitely prepared for that. So...
So remind me, I mean, does this, so you said the actual in 2018 was 3.4%. I mean, this is increasing the property tax for every property owner, not just new?
Right.
Property? So it's across the board?
Yes.
So, okay.
So we feel that those numbers, and, and truly there are some, there are some properties that are, the assessments are much lower, the valuations are, are lower. So I kind of look at that, that across the board and what estimated EAV was for 19, what estimated EAV looks like, including that new property in '20, not seeing much, really much gain at all because of some of the valuation of property was just lower in, in some, in residential areas and some of the other areas. So based on, based on those, those reports, which I have, if any of you want to see those, that's, uh, I was actually hoping for some big jumps in, in property values, but just really not seeing those.
Other questions from the board? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the recommendation of the tax levy as it was just presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
And Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries, which means we do not have to set a tax levy hearing date. So we will bypass item number two. And the last item, I believe, under old business is the analyze of risk for, I'm sorry, there's another one. Number three is analyze of risk for basketball.
Well, um, I sent, uh, the board in the last, or two, two Thursdays ago, Thursday Thoughts, and I forwarded a few other pieces of correspondence related to our, um, the board attorney's analysis as well as the analysis of our insurer. And with both of their assessments that we would be legally culpable if we participated, it is the recommendation of the administration that we forego participating in the IHSA. I think that they said, um, less than 10% of the respondents said that they would, would participate in this IHSA season. And that most are exercising what I'm recommending is waiting till IDPH issues a, a new season for, you know, for participation. So that's my recommendation, just for liability side.
Questions from the board?
On the waiver of liability, if, if they were to, what kind of weight does that hold?
Almost indefensible. Because we still, even if you could defend it, even if we had a strong enough case to say we did everything right, we were, you know... And, and right now, the only thing we're allowed to do is to condition and to like, do like shootarounds. There's no ability to, um, actually scrimmage. That's the next level at, at high risk, and until you're at medium risk, you can't even scrimmage. So they couldn't even prepare if we were following, like, the health guidelines for a high-risk sport. So if we, if we did anything beyond maybe drill work or a shootaround, anytime where they have contact, we could be, we would be considered liableless. And, um, yeah, it's, we don't have any protection or safety net for that.
And if you're, I mean, if it's bad enough, I mean, we're doing the right things in school with social distance and mask-wearing, and they're making us pause that. So I mean, you're gonna have, and we've taken the recommendation on that. So I don't, you can sign a waiver, but most of those waivers, your stuff will get sued and your stuff will lose, probably.
And about over 30 of the, the states are going to start, um, participating in those winter sports. So Illinois will be able to look and see what other states are doing with their, their traditional winter sports. I think about 36 states are, are proceeding with basketball and their winter sports. So maybe they'll look at, at what's going on in other places to see, you know, um, we are the only...
Anybody around us going with IHSA, or?
Um, every, everyone in our, our area is following the IDPH recommendation. I don't know a single one, you know, that is, is going against IDPH and going with the IHSA schedule. We would, um, I think there were two schools. Mount Carmel, I believe, did approve. And then there was one other that, um, that I, I've only had two in this, like, southern Illinois kind of geographical area afforded to me as actually participating against IDPH.
Well, I think there was a lot of talk of people were going to follow with the IHSA until...
Everyone started to...
We got, started getting opinions back from attorneys and the insurance companies, and you don't have a choice.
The night that the, um, when, when basketball was increased to high risk, I started having conversations with, uh, Shane Layden the evening we were texting and emailing, trying to figure out what the implications could be if you did allow... Because everyone wants our kids to have as much joy in their, their lives as you can. You don't want to take away those opportunities, but you have to do everything safely. You have to follow, um, the responsible guidelines that are issued, you know.
I worry about the scholar, I, I think we're doing the right thing, but I worry about the kids that, this is real money for them going to college. And, and, uh, I hate that. I really, really do.
Yeah, it's more than just their senior year, even their junior year for that matter, because that's when scholarships really start.
Yeah, it's not more than a memory, it's money, but, you know, it comes from Springfield or...
I, I, I agree.
You know, they kind of push the hand, like you said, or like I think you said, all these schools in surrounding states are playing, and you missed a couple of games, but seems like Illinois is just, you know, it's a shame.
All the states around us are, are kind of operating in the traditional seasons. And we, we've been kind of a lone, like, centralized state in the country to forego, aside from the non-contact cross-country and, and golf.
But if you're college and pro, then it's safe to play.
It, you know, and, and there are things, you know, when we talk about layers of protection, that our district is one of six school districts in the state who is, I mean, I just want you to understand how special we are to be selected for this pilot. One out of six school districts and one health department is, um, doing this antigen testing, um, in a larger form. DuPage County is doing it for their school systems, but they're, they're operating it. But we're one of six that, um, and we are the southernmost. So, um, it's a wonderful, uh, testament to the school district for having the nursing staff to be able to, to do that well.
Any other questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation that was just presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Now the last item under new business, old business, it's new business.
We just need the approval to allow Michelle Berger's child to attend, uh, Murkisboro Middle School.
Questions? We talked about this last month. I'll entertain a motion to approve the tuition-free students for 2020, 2021 as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a need to go into closed session.
Briefly.
Briefly.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2 of the Open Meetings Act 5, ALM Compiled Statutes 120 slash TC to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint filed against an employee to determine its validity. And number two, the selection of a person to fill a public office defined in the Open Meetings Act, including a vacancy in a public office when the public body is given the power to appoint under law per ordinance. That was a mouthful.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Take a couple of minutes?